Tonight's invocation will be led by Commissioner Walker and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Grekey. Please join us.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all we do here today is for the glory of you and for the service of our community. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission meeting for June 9th, 2022 is now called to order. We encourage you to wear masks while indoors and observe the six-foot social distancing. Please speak clearly into the microphone so everyone can hear once you're called. The hearing room is set up for a maximum of forty people. Please respect the limit and do not add chairs. The lobby and outdoors are overflow areas. The meeting is broadcasted onto the big screen in the lobby. Once you have spoken, please exit the room so others can sit while they're waiting to their turn to speak. When your name is called, please come to the podium, address your comments to the Planning Commission, not to the audience. Any questions you may have will be answered once everyone has signed up to speak. We understand that you have strong feelings in one way or another. Out of courtesy, unless it is your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outburst. This is a fact-finding hearing. If a previous speaker has stated the points in which you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so the hearing may proceed. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes. Please respect the time limit. If you intend to speak, please sign up on the table in the back of the room. Names will be called in the order on the sign-up sheets. Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll?
Ray Mc.
Here.
Janet. Erickson.
Present.
Stafford.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Gurkey.
Present.
Greenway. Lamond. Davis. Walker.
Here.
Hobbie.
Present. May I have a motion to approve last month's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Items placed in this section are applications which demonstrate compliance with all city requirements. These items shall not involve discussion by the Planning Commission and/or the public. The consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. However, if any two commissioners so desire, individuals may discuss and/or vote upon as a separate matter of business. Now, I do understand that we have somebody signed up to speak on consent item number four. May I have a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda with staff findings and recommendations?
Are we, uh, I'm sorry, are we moving item number four off the consent agenda?
Okay, we're moving item number four off the consent agenda, sorry about that.
Okay, so you would need a motion for?
Yeah, I would need a motion by the Planning Commission to move item number four off of the consent agenda to new business.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Of the amendment, yes.
Aye.
Okay, now the amended consent agenda.
May I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda with staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Director Selman, would you read the items on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item number one, applicant is White Daters and Associates representing property owner Deltic Real Estate, LLC. This is a request for preliminary subdivision plat and development plan approval for Phase Two of Gardens Gate subdivision. The recommendation is for approval with nine conditions, and I will read the conditions into the record. All construction and construction activity is to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved preliminary plat and development plan. These conditions of approval and all applicable technical codes and specifications, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality regulations. Number three, the planning director shall be authorized to sign the preliminary plat listing these conditions of approval and the development plan, and work shall not proceed until the preliminary plat has been so executed. Number four, all common elements in the subdivision, if any, shall be privately owned and shall not be the maintenance responsibility of the City of Hot Springs. Number five, no permits will be issued and the sale of lots shall not occur until a final plat meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16444 has been approved by the planning director and filed for record with Garland County Circuit Clerk, and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the Planning Department office. Number six, a final subdivision bill of assurance shall be provided to and approved by the Planning Department prior to execution of the subdivision final plat. Copy of the recorded bill of assurance shall be returned to the Planning Department after recordation. Number seven, the typical street profile section shall be amended to reflect a width of twenty-eight feet with each lane having a width of twelve feet. Number eight, amend the note on sheet number nine to read six-inch SB2 pipe bedding should be one and one-quarter minus sewer gravel. Number nine, approval of this preliminary plat and development plan is valid until June 9th, 2024. Prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension of up to one year. Item number two, the applicant is Retail Building Incorporated, representing property owners Glen Burchiers and Piano Man Properties, LLC, seeking Article II Large-Scale Development Site Plan Review Approval to demolish an existing vacant commercial structure and the new construction of a Brahms Ice Cream and Dairy Store and Assembly Occupancy on the subject property. The recommendation is to approve with six conditions, and I'll read the conditions into the record. The site, the development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan, including but not limited to location of buildings, drives, parking, and landscaping. Number two, all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number three, prior to permitting, Hot Springs Utilities Department requires the Engineers Utility Plan with three specific items. A, the tapping sleeve needs to be called out on the two-inch water tap and the valves need to be shown on both. This water service and the private fire protection line. B, the demarcation valves need to be called out as such. And C, the water meters should be shown, this can be in an enlargement detail if necessary. Number four, required permit shall be in hand for Garland County Stormwater, Garland County Flood Plane Administrator, and Arkansas Department of Transportation prior to any work beginning. Number five, all exterior lighting shall be fully downcast, full cutoff fixtures, and shall contain all illumination on the subject property. And number six, per the approved plan, sidewalks shall be constructed along the Airport Road and Rock Creek Road frontages. Item number three, the applicant is Terry Jernigan. This is a request for conditional use approval to operate Terry Lynn's Family Daycare Home at 305 Troop Street, Ms. Jernigan's single-family residence. This is a request to operate a family home daycare with up to sixteen children. The recommendation is for approval with seven conditions, which I am going to read into the record. Drop-off and pickup shall be scheduled between 7:15 a.m. and 8:40 a.m. and between the hours of 4 p.m. and 5:15 p.m., so as to reduce overlapping to the greatest extent possible. Number two, daycare activities shall be limited to a weekly, Monday through Friday, operation from 6:30 a.m. to 5:15 p.m. Number three, outdoor daycare activities shall be limited to the hours of 10 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. and 3 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Number four, outdoor activity toys shall be neatly stored and out of view of the public and neighbors outside the hours of 10 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. and 3 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Number five, daycare shall comply with Arkansas Fire Prevention Code requirements for this use. Number six, the use and activity shall impose neither undue hardship nor nuisance upon the neighborhood. And number seven, the applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the conditions of approval. A violation of any of these conditions so imposed shall constitute grounds for revocation or modification of this conditional use permit by Planning Commission per Hot Springs Code Section 16279. Item number five, the applicant is Mr. Jonathan Hamner, representing property owner David French. He is seeking a lot split, lot line adjustment, subdivision approval to adjust lot lines between existing unplatted parcels and to create an additional tract. The findings and recommendation are that with conditions, the request meets Hot Springs Code and the conditions are as follows. This plat represents an approved lot split. Any further division hereon must meet the requirements for subdivision in accordance with Hot Springs Subdivision Code. Excuse me, that concludes the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Director. All those in favor for the amended consent agenda?
Would you like a roll call?
Okay.
Pardon me, did we skip or did I miss item number four?
Item number four has been moved to new business.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies, thank you. Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll?
Erickson.
Approve.
Stafford.
Approve.
Scott.
Approved.
Gurkey.
Approved.
Walker.
Approve.
Ray Mc.
Approved.
Hobbie.
Approved. The amended consent agenda has been approved. Items one, two, three, and five are approved. Next on tonight's agenda is new business. There will be an opportunity for the applicant and for the public to provide testimony. Director Selman, would you introduce item number four?
Thank you. Item number four is a request for lot split subdivision approval to divide an unplatted parcel into two tracts.
May I have a motion for approval of item number four? I'm sorry, let me back that up just one second. A motion to approve merely gets a matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and a second does not mean that you're necessarily in favor of this particular application. May I have a motion to approve of approval of item number four?
So moved.
Second.
Planning Commissioners, please hold your questions until everybody has presented. Director Selman, will you please present the staff report on item number four?
Thank you. The applicant is Mr. Brian Keith Bracy, representing property owner Melinda L. Bracy, Revocable Trust, LLC. They are seeking a lot split to divide this unplatted parcel into two tracts. The property has a zoning classification of RL Lake Area Residential, has a future land use classification of residential low, and is located in Board District Number Three. The application request is before you tonight because the initial information that was provided did not demonstrate road frontage on an improved road. The survey that you are considering tonight does in fact meet that requirement, and because this was advertised, it's on your agenda. It was eligible for approval had we had a survey that demonstrated that clearly. So, the finding is that the application meets the requirements for consideration. A common access easement for Tracts One and Two is proposed, which can be used for vehicular access as well as for placement of utilities for both tracts. The revised plat meets Hot Springs Code Section 16446 and satisfies the Development Review Committee comments that came to us. The recommendation is to approve the 300 Sterns Point Lot Split subdivision request because it does demonstrate compliance with the Hot Springs Code, and such action will be in keeping with the spirit and intent of the provisions of the Hot Springs Code. Both of the new tracts meet the minimum lot size requirement for RL.
Thank you, Director. Will the applicant please come forward, state your name and address? Is there anything that you would like to add to the record? You have a maximum of five minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, Brian Bracy, 2543.
Brian Bracy, 2543 North Norwich, Fayetteville, Arkansas. I have really nothing to add.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. At this time, I believe we have two people signed up to speak on this. Mr. David Hoffman, please come forwards, state your name and address. You have a maximum of three minutes for your presentation.
Yes. My name is David Hoffman, and I live at 100 Ridge Terrace, which is not in Hot Springs. However, I am the owner of the parcel next to the two lots. Mine is 99734. That's me. And so far, I haven't heard anything in, contrary to what I, to what my, why I'm here. So I'm going to say goodbye, okay?
Thank you very much. And Ms. Carol Shoup?
Shoup.
Shoup. Sorry about that, ma'am.
Carol Shoup and I, the owner of the property at 301 Sterns Point Road. I don't have an objection to the, I just would like to know how we're going to have access and egress. It's rather crowded at the end of that block, and I just want to know how we're going to accommodate any additional traffic as you come into that area. So I'm the one on the left, Dave's the one in the middle, and the Braces are the one down the hill. If you look at that street, you'll see it's really, really narrow. So I just want to know what we're going to do to accommodate aggressive access to it.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to, to answer or add anything?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I heard the question completely.
The question was, what will be done to accommodate additional vehicle traffic?
Well, presently, there's a driveway. I think the intent was to widen it down, down to, it's, when you come off Sterns Point Road, there's a, a hill down, and it's a fairly narrow driveway presently. There's quite a bit of room on, I would say, northwest, the east side to widen, you know, probably, you know, another 20 feet at least, if that's... So there's a gate there, right there. Okay. Yeah, so, so if you look down there, if, if that's what she's addressing, or the road barriers there on your left, if you go toward your right, of course, the fence would probably be taking, taken down, the gate, I mean, but if you go to the right over there, there's at least 15 or 20 feet where it could be, you know, that, that paved part could be moved, it could be extended to accommodate. I'm not sure what really extra traffic you would want. You just have two, two homesites there.
Okay, those who have signed up have spoke, and at this time, the public hearing portion is, is closed. Now it's time for our planning commissioners to discuss the project and take action. Commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Question?
Are you ready to call for a vote?
Yeah. May I have a motion to approve?
We have a motion.
Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll on, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve item number four?
Stafford?
Approve.
Scott?
Approved.
Gerke?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Raymick?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Hobbie?
Approve. Thank you. Director Salmon, would you please introduce item number six?
Yes, thank you. Item number six is initial zoning application for 56 acres north of Magic Springs, requesting initial zoning of C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District. This is an item that was on your agenda last week. For procedural reasons, it is on your agenda again tonight.
May I have a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and a second does not mean that you're merely in a favor of this particular application. May I have a motion to approve item number six?
Shall move.
Second. Thank you. Planning Commissioners, please hold your questions until everyone has presented. Director Salmon, will you please present item number six?
Yes, thank you. Just to review with you, this is land that is being considered for annexation to the city of Hot Springs, and Hot Springs Code has a very specific requirement regarding timing, excuse me, of initial zoning recommendation from Planning Commission, which is, following the entering of an order by county court granting a petition for annexation and during the 30-day waiting period during which proceedings may be instituted for having the annexation prevented, Planning Commission shall conduct a public hearing to discuss the zoning of the proposed annexed areas and any modifications to the comprehensive plan that might be appropriate. And then it goes on to list other procedural requirements. While the applicant correctly stated on the application that Garland County Judge Mahoney considered the item on May 5th prior to Planning Commission's May meeting, the judge did not in fact enter the order until a week later, which was following your Planning Commission meeting. Hot Springs City Attorney advises that Planning Commission action must occur after the judge enters the order, so the item now appears on tonight's agenda for a zoning recommendation to the Board of Directors. Now, they have requested C4 zoning. The record from last month will reflect the details of that. The finding is that initial zoning to C4 does not present immediate potential negative impacts to the existing large lot rural and residential and expanses of publicly-owned forest. Adjacent and nearby properties are currently zoned C4 or are unzoned. No new uses or development activities are being approved at this time. Neither annexation nor zoning should be interpreted as providing assurances that this land is either feasible or ready for development. Future development on the property will likely require substantial infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to water main extensions, sewer main extensions, street improvements, and drainage improvements. Hawk Terrace appears substandard as it is a narrow, often unimproved road without curb and gutter. Improvements to Hawk Terrace would likely be a requirement for future development of the site. The desired C4 zoning is consistent with a comprehensive plan, future land use map designation of tourist commercial. Should the future land use map be so amended, the assignment of C4 zoning demonstrates compatibility with surrounding zoning per Hot Springs Code 16-211E1, and the standard for such initial zoning is met. The recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors zone the subject property C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District and amend the future land use designation to tourist commercial because that will demonstrate compliance with Hot Springs Code. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Director Salmon. Will the applicant please come forward, state your name and address? Is there anything that you would like to add to the record? You have a maximum of five minutes to make your presentation.
My name is Ray Owen. I'm a lawyer here in town. My address of my law office is 209 Hobson. My residential address is 110 Lee Circle in Old East Gate. So long-term resident, long-term attorney here in this, in this community. Magic Springs wants to be able to provide an opportunity for people to visit them for longer periods of time by providing a, a place where there may be cabins, camping, tent camping, a place for big RVs to be able to, to spend the night or the week, make it more easily available to families to be able to spend time on that campus, as it were. This is a, a place for this to be. We've started talking about this about two or three years ago, met with the city, and determined that we needed to be able to do something to be able to get water to the upper stretch of this property because the pressure of the water is not sufficient to be able to go to the top of it and provide sufficient pressure. So we'd probably have to put a tank up there. It's the, the project right now, it looks like the cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of $25 million. But it will make Magic Springs more accessible for people to be able to stay there in that immediate area for several days at a time. That's the plan. I think it's going to be beneficial to all, and I hope that you will give it its strong consideration. We have here tonight also Daniel George with B&amp;F Engineering, which may be soon crafting and tell if not already, engineering, and he can talk if, if you all need him to or need, try to answer any of your questions, and Jessica Hannah, who is the new general manager of Magic Springs. And they are both over my left shoulder here. So will you have any questions for me?
Not at this time.
Thank you for your consideration.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Just the applicant.
Well, at this time, the public hearing to this, for this portion is now closed. Planning Commissioners, do we have any questions, concerns, anything that we'd like to discuss at this point?
No. Not for me. No. No.
Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll?
Scott?
Approve.
Gerke?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Raymick?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Hobbie?
Approve. Thank you. Director Salmon, will you please introduce item number seven?
Thank you. Item number seven is a rezone, RZ 22142, a request to change the current R2 zoning to R4 zoning on 10 acres of property located on Shady Grove Road.
A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and a second does not mean that you are necessarily in favor of this particular application. May I have a motion to approve item number seven?
Shall move.
Say it.
Planning Commissioners, please hold your questions until everyone has presented. Director Salmon, will you please present the staff report on item number seven?
Thank you, Chairman. The applicant, Mr. Stephen Smith, seeks R4 medium-high-density residential zoning for approximately 10 acres of land on Shady Grove Road, generally west of Moats Street and somewhat south of Hollywood Avenue. The subject property is currently zoned R2 suburban residential. It has a future land use map classification of residential low density. It's located in Board of Directors District Number Five. The application states the following under proposed use, unknown TBA. Should rezoning be successful, the full range of R4 uses would be possible. The subject property is 10 acres described by meets and bounds and located at approximately the 400 block of Shady Grove Road. This parcel has approximately 1,200 feet of frontage on Shady Grove. The surrounding land use is as follows. To the north, cemetery lands; to the east, cemetery lands; to the south, undeveloped, wooded; and west, undeveloped, wooded. The application states in support of this request that the property demonstrates compatibility with surrounding zoning. The surrounding zoning is residential but is developed as cemetery or is undeveloped, that it is consistent with zoning objectives. The R4 zone district is described in Hot Springs Code Section 16-244A in part. This district should be a mixture of single-family homes, duplexes, apartments, and customary accessory uses near schools, employment centers, and commercial centers. The subject land is conveniently located near Oaklawn Racing Casino Resort Employment to downtown, to National Park Medical Center, and to other nearby established employment The 10-acre site enjoys an unusual amount of permanent open space with the cemetery, country club, and Hot Springs Creek Greenway nearby. Such amenities may offset the greater-than-single-family-density-residential development that is possible in the R4 zone district. If developed, Shady Grove Road provides resident access that bypasses surrounding neighborhoods. These facts enable Planning Commission to find that the requested zoning change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and is consistent with the zoning objectives as required by Hot Springs Code Section 16-211E. If the change to R4 is approved, the full range of R4 uses would be possible. The finding is that with a future land use plan map amendment to residential medium-high designation, the subject property would have a consistent land use designation and is consistent with other R4 medium-high-density residential zone properties' future land use designations. The applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration are met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommendation to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. The staff recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the future land use map designating the subject property as residential medium-high, and to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property R4 medium-high-density residential because Planning Commission has made a specific finding that the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and that the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code as required by Hot Springs Code Section 16-211E. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Director Salmon. Will the applicant now come forward, state your name and your address? And is there anything that you would like to add to the record? You have a maximum of five minutes for your presentation.
Thank you. Steve Smith. I live at 720 Quapa, 10-acre parcel. We don't have any development plans at this time, but we are asking to, for the R4 rezone. It's a nice piece of property, and I think it fits all the requirements for development in that area under R4. So be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up to speak on this?
Nobody.
The public hearing portion is now closed. Planning Commissioners, we will now discuss the project and take action. Any questions?
No discussion.
Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll?
Gerke?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Raymick?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Scott?
Approved.
Hobbie?
Approve. The next item on the agenda is the director's report. Director Salmon?
Thank you. First of all, excuse me, several planning commissioners attended the American Planning Association National Conference via Zoom. Lori, Ladante, Rick, and Bill Lamond were able to attend, and Bart is... Lori, Ladante, Rick, and Bill LeMond were able to attend and Bart is attending virtually through the end of June due to his illness. We thought it would be fun to hear from each attending about what was most interesting to them and so we plan to do that following the agenda meeting in July. So that'll give you time to get your two-to-five-minute presentation ready to go. That should be really fun. Okay, we're still recruiting for the Long Range Historic Preservation Planner, followed up with Lori's suggestion last time. We have an ad that's ready to go with them. We'll be advertising in one other place. We've prepared a recruitment video, which I just previewed and there's way too much of me in there and not enough of Hot Springs, so Katie has done a brilliant job on that and she'll, she'll have it in Academy Award condition in no time, I'm sure. We will begin negotiating tomorrow with Camero's Planning and Zoning Consultants of Chicago regarding our development code project. We had two responses to our request for proposals and they were both amazing. So if somehow we don't get what we need with Camero's in negotiation, then our, our second choice is also an excellent choice. So Camero's offered something above and beyond what we envisioned, which was a user manual and training for staff and the public, and that just kind of knocked it out of the park as far as that proposal went. We've had, as long as I've been here, we've had people say, you know, I don't get your code, I don't understand what's going on there, make it easier, and that's one of our goals, but to have an actual user manual, I think, is, is really going to be helpful. So we're excited about that.
The user manual is going to be for the public?
The user manual is for everybody, yeah.
Very good.
I am so excited about this.
Manual and training, so that's included in the price they quoted us, which is actually below the amount of money that we budgeted. It just seems like this is meant to be. No, don't say that. It's meant to be. Also, I want to comment on the motorcycles. Those of you who have been on Planning Commission for a while know that every year in December, we look at the calendar, we call, visit Hot Springs, and we ask, when is the motorcycle event? We are not trying to schedule it on the same night as the motorcycle event and every year in September, we offset our meeting by a week so that we will avoid it. Well, apparently, not enough people wanted to come to an event in September, so they're holding it in June and on a Planning Commission night. So we tried, we really did, and it's not as bad as it has been at other times.
No, not at all.
But, yeah, we tried. So that's it and I want to thank you all for being Planning Commissioners and doing what you do and being here when you could obviously be outside or at the end of the block dancing up a storm, so.
And you'll be there with us, won't you?
I don't know.
You're on time to co-music.
I don't know. So that's all I have.
Okay, with no further business, we are ready to adjourn the June ninth, twenty-twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Madam Chairman, I second that.
All right, meeting is adjourned.